Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We already did the two-minute warning and appreciate everyone being here today. And let's formally say the time is now 9:45 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of September 14, 2010, is called to order. Should let you know that Kathleen Strauss called and said she's a little under the weather, so won't be here today, which is unusual. And John had already alerted us that I think he's calling in a little bit later. Appreciate everyone else's attendance and certainly our guests. But before I get to introductions, that Eileen will handle as she always does, the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Have a motion, please.
Well, I'd like to table item J.
Yeah, and I would...
So we either remove it or we leave it on and then have the discussion and table it later?
To table. Leave it on and we'll table it later.
Yeah, but when we get to that, let's make a note. You're saying the protocols are such that we...
We have to accept the agenda so you can table it.
Table it later.
We get the point and we will...
We don't have no agenda until we accept it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll support it.
So it was moved by Nancy and supported by Carolyn. Any discussion or changes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. And Eileen, if you'd handle introductions, please.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
The head of the table and chairman of the state board is Mr. Mike Flanagan, the superintendent of public instruction. And as he indicated, Mrs. Strauss is under the weather today. She resides in Detroit and is the board's president. And also John Austin, the board's vice president, who resides in Ann Arbor, is unable to join us, although may join us via telephone this afternoon. Next is Mrs. Carolyn Curtin from Ebert, Secretary of the Board. Next is Mrs. Marion Yarid McGuire from Detroit, treasurer. Next is Michael Zeig, representing Governor Granholm at the board table. And next we welcome to the board table Matenga Ragatz. She, Ragatz, am I pronouncing it properly? She is the Michigan Teacher of the Year for the coming year. And when she's in the classroom, she is at Grand Lodge High School, teaching Global Studies. Moving across the table is Ms. Cassandra Albridge, number from Rochester Hills. The next empty chair is that of Mr. Reginald Turner from Detroit, and I expect that he will be joining us here shortly. Next is Mrs. Elizabeth Bower from Birmingham. And then next is Mrs. Nancy Danhoff from East Lansing. And Mrs. Danhoff represents the board as its delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. Department of Education staff, Sally Vaughn, chief academic officer, deputy superintendent; Carol Wollenberg, deputy superintendent; Mary Alice Galloway interim deputy superintendent, state school reform officer; Martin Ackley, director of communications; Andrea Post, administrative aide to the superintendent; Lisa Hanskynek, legislative director; Marion Chartran, director grants coordination and school support; Flora Jenkins, director of professional preparation; and Joseph Martineau, director educational assessment and accountability; and Linda Forward, director of education improvement and innovation. And we also welcome to the board meeting today Eleanor White. She is our new director of special education and earlier intervention services.
Welcome, Eleanor.
Some of our regular attenders. We have both Nancy Flanagan and David Barth here, representing the network of Michigan educators. Frank Stalasky is with us today, representing the Michigan Education Association. Casey Kefkin, representing Michigan Middle Cities Education Association. Terrence Lungert, superintendent Calhoun Intermediate School District. Judy Pritchett, Macombe Intermediate School District. Dan Quisenberry is here, representing the Michigan Association of Public School Academies. Barbara Stork, Michigan Association of Non-Public Schools. Billy Wimmer, Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers. And Linda Sherrill, who is the dean at Spring Harbor University, is also with us today.
Thank you, Eileen. Well, today, I thought I'd just start out before this item to say that I saw a report this morning that gave some new hope to our state. I think it has a lot to do with the fact that this board and ultimately the legislature and the governor, by taking your leadership through everything from high school requirements to ed reform, we were the number-one job creator in these last few months. And I know we've been down and out, so when there's some good news, number one in the whole country.
Probably nice to have good news.
In the whole country. So it's not even a matter of coming up percentage-wise. It's a matter of raw jobs created, so that's...
So how many jobs were there?
I don't know the number. I just took the positive.
More than three.
Yeah, it was 11 jobs. There were 11 new jobs. No, actually, it was a...I wish I could remember the number, but it did strike me that...
But the trend is up, and that's...
Right.
Yeah.
And so that's good news. Today, really, I...this is...I don't remember what we formally called these meetings, when it's not the business meeting.
Kind of our reimagined meetings, not traditional.
Kind of our reimagined. And there's always a little business that has to be done, and welcome, Matenga. Happy to have you at the table with the board. But today is really our opportunity as staff to do what we realize is going to be important to do, and that is understand in some depth that at the board level, as well as community members and others that are here today, the impact of these reform laws that were signed in January. I think I'll even easily admit, as state superintendent, I'm learning something about them every day. And as they come to pass and we start working on them, there's a lot of nuances. The most...the one that's gotten the most publicity, of course, has been the so-called list of the persistently lowest-achieving schools. In my...from my point of view, a kind of an unfortunate designation in terms of the terminology, but it's what the feds have called it. And these are schools that are preparing plans, but I don't want to jump ahead of the presentation, but it's our most current issue. And it certainly has schools in a position where they're putting plans together, and you'll hear more about that today. But you're also going to hear about other parts of the legislation, like the cyber schools, like the schools of excellence, how we're going to put together alternative certification, when the timeline...this is one reason I very much appreciate the board signing a contract with the board to go three more years in my case, is because I think if you look at the timeline on these, it's going to take us three years to get these implemented. Some started right away, and you'll hear more about that today. I think when we get to the time that we look back with a little bit of experience on these, I think we will realize these are the most historic reforms that have ever been put in place. I think it started, frankly, with this board approving five years ago the high school graduation requirements. And it started to bring attention to the idea that the only way we're going to be able to succeed as a state, the only way that we're going to have economic development, is for much larger numbers of kids to reach very high levels of achievement. And all the numbers are up. If you look since then, the three-year trends on everything, ACT, all the scores that Joseph shows us, dropout rates down. I mean, we together, along with the legislature and the governor, can be proud of that. It's not by accident. This is not rocket science. If we expose more kids to content, if we work on teacher preparation, these things are going to happen. So I'm really excited about the next couple of years, working together with you to implement these. Nancy.
Now, if you're not done.
No, I'm done.
I think before we get started, one of the things that I would like to vocally make clear, and I'm guessing my fellow board members would agree with this, is I'm with you. I get so concerned when I read in the newspapers about these bad schools. And I think we need to make it clear, there's a difference between a persistently low-performing school...we can't sugarcoat it. I mean, they're persistently low-performing. But there's no one in those buildings that is a bad person.
No.
That doesn't care about kids, that doesn't want to do the right thing, that doesn't want to be successful. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind as we listen to these presentations and have our discussions, that we're talking about people who care, people who want to do the right thing. And what our job is, and what the state's job is, what the federal government's job is, in some cases, is to help these people become successful. And to help these children receive the kinds of aid that they need, but also the kinds of professional development for their teachers and principals and those who work in those buildings. I just...just somehow, we need to help people understand that...
Well, today's...
We have those words that are used in the media that they may not intend for that kind of...
Colors opinion.
It does. It colors everything that we're doing. And I think we need to be real clear about what we're doing.
I think today, and I hope you'll feel comfortable to...we've broken this down into sections so that you can have a full dialogue after each section. For instance, the one on the so-called PLA schools, and then a separate one on the cyber schools and the teacher prep. And if we...our plan is kind of to have Mary Alice come down first, who's our...the whole team's going to come in first, and that's Linda Forward and Flora Jenkins and...
Just like you and Linda.
Or is it you and Linda just first?
It's a team deal.
It's a team deal.
Whoever's coming down's coming down, and then we're going to do it and break it in sections. And then I think at the end of each section, if you'd fully engage, as you see, questions, comments, whatever you think, and then we move on to the next reform.
That's fine. I just wanted to put it in the context for all of what we were talking about that...
It's good context. Thank you for that. And I do think, I will say this in preview to this, there are some very, very harsh consequences. One that I, for one, and I think some others, have tried to get the secretary to be more flexible on at the state level, is that if you've been a principal for more than two years in one of those schools, the principal needs to be removed. We think, and are continuing to kind of lobby and can use everyone's help, that that shouldn't be an automatic. That should be based on a review of their plan that's coming in. You'll hear more about that in a moment when their plans come in. And if their plan is that we feel it's on the right trajectory, we'd like to be able to keep that. We should, in my opinion, be able to approve that if we choose to. But for now, that's the one area where there's just no flexibility. And a couple of us had a session with some of those folks involved, and it's very difficult. But it is what it is for now, and we'd appreciate the continued help. It doesn't mean that, in some cases, maybe that is the solution, but it's fairly arbitrary.
It should be individual, though.
And we're hoping, even at my association level, we're...I'm on the board of CCSSO, and we're continuing to ask the feds for some flexibility on that. And then...but let me, without further ado, I am going to say this, that probably unlike my normal duties as chair, I'm almost going to be a co-presenter in some sense, and I'm going to...so we talked about this yesterday in prep, that it wouldn't appear to be rude that I might be jumping in at times a little more than I might normally.
We're going to be squeezed in this now?
So just...
Okay, it's a squeeze play. We know.
It's a squeeze play. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Alice Galloway, the interim deputy superintendent and state reform officer.
Thanks, Mike. Mike has mentioned a couple of important things, and Mrs. Danhoff has mentioned a really important thing also. And that is that this is not easy work. It's new work. It's required by state law. It's supported by federal law. And many of the elements are controlled by federal law. But as Mike started out with, the splash that persistently lowest-achieving schools made, that's only one part of the reform law. And that's one thing that we wanted to really bring to people's attention at this point, is that there are several other pieces. That's why my colleagues are here with me. Also, when we get to the point where we're discussion...we have discussion, we're asking questions, no one person can possibly hold all of this in his or her head. It takes a team. And I'm really glad that we have a good team who's willing to work through this and do the work. When we think about reform, a lot of times, people say, "Why do we have to do this?" That was one of the first questions we heard. "Why are you doing this?" There are a lot of things that we thought would happen when "No Child Left Behind" was passed, and some of those things did happen. There's a lot more attention, as you all know and have supported, on subgroups of students that were hidden in the past. That's been a real plus. But they haven't progressed as quickly as we want in some schools. Michigan has a huge economic crisis. We've heard over and over again how education can get us out of that and get us back on the pathway to success. The other reality that all of you know so well is that a child without a good education is not going to earn a good living out in the world. So it's a pathway for success. It's also a product of a strong economy. Michigan has awesome higher education institutions that are known all over the world. So we have to have our entire pre-K-12 system on that same path. And that's in part what this is all about. So let's go into a little bit about what changed.
One of the components that changed was with regard to charter schools with the state legislation. And there are probably four components we'd want to take a look at that were changes. The current charter schools can now convert to schools of excellence. And you have a one-page summary of some of the components there. For instance, an elementary school that's being considered has to be...a charter elementary school has to be either K-8. Their standards are, over a three-year period of time, 90% of the students must be proficient in math and reading, or the number could go down to 70% proficient in math and reading if 50% of their students are receiving free and reduced lunch support. And so that's what the elementary would look like. At the high school level, 9 through 12, 80% of the students have to be graduating or on track to graduate. 80% average daily attendance must be attained by that charter school. And 80% of the students have to go on to enroll in a post-secondary institution. So if a current charter wants to be considered by its authorizer for switching into a school of excellence, they'd have to meet those criteria. We also have the opportunity to create 10 new schools of excellence.
And Linda, if I may, if they meet that criteria, then what?
Then the authorizer can convert them to a school of excellence. They have the right to do that. And then they...that opens up a slot for them to open a new public school academy.
Right. So theoretically, in theory, all of the existing charters could, at some point in time, be named a school of excellence. It's not likely they would meet that criteria, but some will.
Some will and can convert, and the authorizers appear to be studying the landscape right now and looking at their data to see if any of their schools meet this. And the word that I have so far is that they're targeting next school year, a year from now, that they may have some schools that would be qualified, that they would move on into a school of excellence, which will then open up a slot for them for a new charter.
Thank you.
Another component is the 10 new charter schools that can be authorized if approved by the state superintendent. And these are also schools of excellence. However, these have to be approved by the state superintendent. They have to be modeled after a high-performing, nationally-recognized example of a school of excellence. No contract can be offered through this legislation after January 1, 2015. So that means that at the 2014-15 school year, we would see the last of any of these 10 coming through under current legislation. And they may not be located in any district that has a graduation rate of over 75%. So clearly, the legislation is targeting places where we have high need for high-quality schools, that are looking at a way to do things differently and to help kids have a greater access to a quality education. The third model is two new cyber schools that can be authorized, and these are in practice. They did open this fall. Two contracts can be issued by authoritative bodies. They did do that. They went through our review process, and school code numbers have been issued. The enrollment for these students, for these schools, is across the state, and they are previously...students who were previously enrolled in a public school. So now we're looking at kids who have already been enrolled in a public school and would like to try a cyber school environment. They operate...the operating entity must demonstrate experience in serving urban and other youth that are at high risk in order to be in...in order to be the operating entity. And we have two that are nationally-recognized. And the initial enrollment cannot exceed 400 students. So they were looking at first to have 400 students. If in future years they'd like to exceed that count, they may do so, but for every student that they bring in, under just a student wanting to come in and try the cyber experience, they must also bring in one dropout. So it's a one-to-one match at that point. And the limit on these schools is 1,000 students. And then finally, the low-performing public school academies, this is probably the one that got the most press initially, says that charter schools on the PLA list may be closed. Yes, but. They must have been in operation for at least four years. They must be on the list of persistently lowest-achieving schools. They must be in the second year of restructuring, which is really the sixth year of the process under NCLB, when schools go into high-priority status. And so they have to have gotten that far down the path. They are not serving a specialized population, for instance incarcerated youth. And they are not failing AYP solely because they are students with disabilities. So if they're failing for other reasons besides that, then they may be closed. The school is required to close at the end of the school year. So we published the list in August. They have until June of this coming year to close, if they meet those criteria. And this year, there was one school that did...one public school academy that did meet that set of criteria, and will be closing at the end of this school year. So that's charters kind of in a nutshell.
So why don't we pause? I mean, that's an example of a time that maybe if they're either clarifying questions or comments and don't feel the need to generate them, if you don't have them, this is your chance on this section. You can come back later, too. I don't mean to...please, Cassandra.
Do we know how many schools would fall into these categories at this point?
No, we don't. For instance, when we look at the converting into schools of excellence, that's where the authorizers and others are taking a look at the situation now to see which of their schools might meet those criteria so that they could open...move them to school of excellence and open another public school academy. Schools of excellence, there could be 10 of those. We don't know that at this point, how many would open. Cyber schools, we know, two. And the low-performing right now, one. And that will change from year to year.
One element about the new...the 10 new charters, the first five need to be high schools. They need to have at least one of grades 9 through 12. And if...that's challenging. That's much more challenging to start with a high school than it is to start with an elementary and add a grade every year.
It's very expensive to have a high school, so that's a challenge.
And Linda mentioned that on the cyber schools, our folks...what's the word? The criteria?
We reviewed the applications that came in, the contracts.
That came in. And we did...we didn't have any controversy because it ended up being only two, and two were available. I was a little...candidly, I was a little discouraged because at one point, there was a...some representing the authorizers were indicating that it was a first-come, first-served. And we didn't get down to this, kind of look each other in the eyeball, but I asked the two presidents to meet with me a few Mondays ago of the ones that were in the pipeline, and they did. And part of it was that I think we needed to make the point that, worst-case scenario, had that been interpreted that way, I think I would have insisted that the AG take a look at it, and which would have stopped it from opening this year. Because I don't think it's appropriate...I know there's some tension around this, but I don't think it's appropriate that I'm forced to sign something just because it comes first, come first served, and I wouldn't have done so. It turns out, these did meet our criteria. Not only that, they worked very well with our folks. The authorizers were excellent on this. It's Grand Valley and Ferris. They got two very good operators with national reputations. So I mean, everything panned out, but I didn't want to kind of skim over tension that was there for a little bit of time that we got through. I even went and met with the presidents and started out...they asked me once a year to come in when they meet in town here. And I started out by saying that, you know, I know that your position, or at least the position of some of your lobbyists, has been first-come, first-served. And I wanted to just tell you that this morning, one came in from school district DEX, which I won't mention, and so I assigned it to him, because it's first-come, first-served. So Ferris and Grand Valley, you're going to have to fight over who gets in quickly to under this first-come, first-served. And then I was ready to say that I was only kidding, which I was, to make a point, but then...then...
Luana.
No, Mary Sue Coleman was on video and said, "Mike, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you." So I repeat the fib, which was a little awkward. And then as I see the two presidents, who were very good, by the way, I think both Dave and Tom are excellent, but I could see they were concerned, and a little dramatic perhaps, but I wanted to make the point, did that really make sense, first-come, first-served?
No.
Because someone could have given me that application that morning, and had an inferior operator that didn't have a plan that was well-thought-out like theirs. So I hope, and I know some of the interested parties are...Billy, Dan, and others are here, and I just hope we, as we continue that kind of effort, that we're more thoughtful. Bottom line is, it worked out very well. I think we're going to be served very well. They also under...the reason I asked them to come in was in case we had any last-minute issues, I didn't want to have to try to track them down. And they were good enough to be here on that Monday. We sorted everything out and issued the charters, and they started on the day after Labor Day or less.
And to build on that, Mike, because these are charter schools, they're charter schools, but they're also cyber schools, and because it's a cyber environment, there are a lot of questions about how do you serve special ed students in a cyber environment? How do you count students? And are they in attendance? And under what circumstances does it count for attendance? And so our staff is meeting with both of the staffs from those two schools regularly to sort out these pieces and get the answers to those questions before we get too far into a year.
This is very exciting, and I think it's measured. I think the legislation was done appropriately because it's measured, the 400 cap, and eventually the 1,000, the trade-off with the dropout, you know, really targeting where this makes a difference out of the million, you know, a million and a half kids. It's a relative handful, but it gives us a chance to really get this right. Because our kids are changing the way they learn in very dramatic ways. And we've done waivers, as you know, for part of the day. Some kids are doing, based on full-time waivers, are doing online work all day. This is a different concentration of that and something we have to watch carefully to make sure it's done right. I think Mary Ann was first, and then Nancy, and then Cassandra.
I was just wondering, what is the situation with computers then for people in the cyber schools? Do they go to a location? Does someone give them a computer?
Yes and yes.
Oh, okay.
Time it can be spent at home, in a learning environment, and computers have to be provided if none is available to them. And then students do come in, and they do have meetings with people who will, you know, provide them with assistance if they need it. And some of that happens right online. Sometimes we never see the student. They are invisible to us. So there are...it's a new way of learning and a new way of thinking about it. I know some of my colleagues in education are hesitant right now, trying to see how this all plays out.
But essentially, anyone who wants to be in it will be able to. Okay. Thank you.
Any parent could. Nancy, and then Cassandra, please.
I just want to clarify something here, because I've had questions on this, too. When I look at your two new...or 10 new charter schools may be authorized, approved by the state superintendent. Those 10 new charter schools, if I understood what you just said, are not just any charter schools. They're schools of excellence.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think we need to make that clear when we put those down here. Just because I've been asked, how come we're adding 10 more charter schools when there's a cap? And so then you have to go through and explain the difference. And so I think just for the sake of clarity, I think it'd be worthwhile to make that clear on there. Are the cyber schools that are...are they...I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, and don't quite know you've now asked, are the cyber schools also schools of excellence in terms of what they're required to do? Or is that a totally different ball of wax?
There are two separate pieces in the legislation. And one talks directly to the 10 schools of excellence, and then right underneath it are the two cyber schools. However, they are expected to meet high qualifications. So you have 10, and then you have two.
Right. But in your...in the piece that we were given, under the schools of excellence, it talks about 80% of students graduate or on track to graduate, 80% average daily attendance. Are those the kind of criteria that we're also going to be using for the cyber schools as well?
No.
Okay, that's what I was...I didn't know how to ask this correctly.
In order to convert...
That's for the conversion.
In order to convert, an existing charter has to be able to demonstrate that it's meeting the criteria that are in that first category.
Okay, so that's just the conversion criteria. Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Cassandra, please.
Two things. One, I think going back to the clarity issue, one of the issues is that we have schools that have earned their way and to be calling a school of excellence. And then we have brand-new schools that are automatically called a school of excellence, even though they haven't attained any of these measurables. And so I think that's kind of a confusing issue for a lot of people, and I completely understand why. My question is, these measurables, these metrics here, are these predefined in the legislation, or are these what the department has come up with?
Predefined in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go to the next section, because we've got a bunch of these, and Mary Alice.
Okay. Actually, the next section actually will take us to my colleague, Flora, because what changed dramatically is a lot of... Because what changed dramatically is a lot of the, the metrics around teachers and leaders. And I'm going to turn it over to Flora. What's on the screen is an outline, but she has a lot more of the detail that goes along with it.
I think I'm going to turn it over to Joseph first to talk about the, the performance evaluation that happens. Because a lot of it is centered around student growth and that being a significant factor in the evaluation. So Joseph, if you want to talk about that piece and then I can go on to the other section.
As part of the, part of the legislation does say that educators, and that includes teachers, administrators, being principals, superintendents and central office staff, central office administrators, do have to receive an annual evaluation, an annual performance evaluation. And the legislation indicates that it has to be rigorous, transparent and fair. It also says that it must use feedback and student growth data as a part, as a significant part of the evaluation. The legislation does not define what significant means. It also indicates that those evaluations.
If I may, for context, this is the one I got in some trouble on. And it wasn't with Malice, but I might as well, for context. This is one I had issued during the race to the top first application. Kind of a memo that said, we, we would interpret significant to be 40 to 60% of an evaluation. And that was done with two things in mind. One, to garner the points under race to the top where it was asked to be defined. And the reason, I, I didn't do a very good job at this at the time, so I'll acknowledge that. But I, I think the reason it wasn't as dire as folks thought is still locally negotiated would be what the consequences of that were. So I think it got a little bit, not with Malice, but a little bit distorted as if the state soup was imposing this. What it was really saying is, it was pretty clear what the feds were asking. About 50% be student achievement growth. And then in addition to that, I felt comfortable issuing this memo because the bottom line was local districts with their teacher unions would negotiate what the consequences would be. So I mean, in a district, it might be 50% is not, you're not doing really well. And therefore, what we're going to do is we're going to ask you to embrace a professional development plan. That's what I would have done as a local superintendent, not fire a teacher. I mean, I would have said, hey, there's an issue here, so let's work on that. But I think it got, you know, as I said, we were in a bit of a rush. If there's an excuse in January, remember we had that short little window. I ended up pulling that, as you might remember, because it, it just wasn't received well. And the second go around, we didn't have that at all. The catch 22 was, so we didn't get any points for it the second go around either. So I, it just is what it is. I don't mean to overly confuse it, but I wanted to give you context for that significant issue and why I hope districts on their own will interpret that. Joseph said it doesn't have a clear interpretation, but I, I think if we, my daughter's a high school teacher. I don't want her fearing that someone is arbitrarily going to cost her her job because it's 50% based on student achievement growth. But I think she wants to know, I know this from talking to her about it. She wants to know, well, if, if I'm not getting the growth that I should, what are the consequences? And I want to know upfront. And I want my union to be able to negotiate that. And I think that's fair, you know, to negotiate what consequences would be. So sorry to, I wanted to give a little context to that comment.
So it does indicate that these evaluations, these annual evaluations do need to be used to inform important decisions such as compensation, tenure, retention, hiring. Am I missing anything? I think that's it. And that ample opportunity for improvement needs to be provided if there is a poor evaluation. One of the things that was done in the second round, which I think is actually a really good model, is there is a framework for Michigan educator evaluations that was put together by MASSP, Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, the Michigan Elementary and Middle Schools Principal Association, the American, the Michigan Federation of Teachers and the Michigan Education Association. So it was a collaborative development of a framework for Michigan educator evaluations. And it did take into account all of these things. And it was also very, very thoughtful in how it handled the student growth portion and how it handled the portions about making sure that we do have this local bargaining, local control, that it's not just a test on a single day that is impacting a teacher's career, that you would actually have to have multiple consistent low performance in order to have some kind of negative, multiple, consistent low performances over several years in order to have the negative consequences that might come about because of low student growth over time. So there are some really important things that are in that framework. That framework was endorsed by the state in the second round race to the top application. And many of the districts, as they are now renegotiating their contracts, are using that framework. And it is actually, I think, a very good model for what could be used across, across the country.
Flora, are we at the point of some dialogue here?
I don't know if you want to ask a question, Flora, I can.
Questions at this point?
Nancy, please.
Sorry, I'm going to get around where I can see it here. We, I know have, are, are either in the process of or have just recently been able to put tags on teachers so that we can even follow that. Where are we in that process?
Okay, the, that's something that is happening under the state longitudinal data system and the registry of educational personnel under SEPIS responsibility. The first round of actually having the links between teachers and students will happen this next spring.
Okay.
So that is a new thing. It is going in place for this next spring. We think that that will also backtrack to this next fall's assessment. So we should be able to connect fall assessment scores with individual educators for this next, by this next spring.
So given what you've just said then on needing several years of data, then we're not, this isn't something that's going to automatically happen this year. This is something that will, we're looking three years out minimal.
Yeah, so one of the things that is in the framework, which we think is very good, is that it indicates that these data should be used formatively for the first three years that an educator is in a particular evaluation system. So that you get your, you get the portion of your evaluation that comes from student growth and achievement data that's used formatively for those first three years. So that you get an opportunity, it's this ample opportunity for improvement part. An ample opportunity to demonstrate, and you wouldn't want, as a, as someone who is doing these evaluations, to make a judgment based on had one good year, one bad year, another good year, another bad. You know, you don't want to make a decision based on unstable data. You would really want that stable data. So it's that ample opportunity for improvement as well as stability before you make some kinds of decisions like that.
Do, do we have any kind of, is there any kind of research or any kind of, anything to inform us on? Well, let me back up a minute. Here's what comes to mind. Given the changes that are happening so quickly in local school districts now based on their economy, you have teacher A that, that could be in this building this year, the next building, the following year, and the third year be in the third building. How does that affect or does it affect, do we know if that affects? How we're going to look at this data and how that's going to be used? I, I have a concern about that.
There's, there are actually two pieces to that. One is the, the more different populations of students you have, the better opportunity you actually have to show how you do with different populations. So that actually helps in, in some ways. But then there's the other piece of how does teacher mobility affect the individual teacher? So in some ways, I would look at that as there are pluses to that in terms of evaluations because you really get a sense of how teachers do with multiple student populations. It's not just the same neighborhood that's providing students every year. But you would also have to have that local ability for the, for the principal or for the superintendent to be able to say, you've been moved around a lot. You haven't had that stability. And we think that's one of the reasons that that local control, that local ability to negotiate what happens is really important in this, in this framework.
Yeah, I see so many teachers that are, that are, and sometimes, well, too often it's through no one's choice, but it just, it's the way it works out because here's my pool of teachers and here's the, here's the holes I need to fill type of thing. Where they teach second grade one year, they teach fifth grade the next year. And the fourth year or the third year, they're back at kindergarten, you know? It's, okay, where is that? And so that's why I was curious how that, so I, I'm appreciative of that local control then.
Please, please, then Mary Ann.
Yeah, just following up on that mobility question. My, my thought before Nancy asked about the mobility of the educator is in some of our environments, students move all the time. And a teacher in one academic year may have even up to 70%, maybe even more turnover of her students. And yes, we can track the student, but you know, who gets the credit for their learning when they have had, you know, different teachers and one year?
Well, under the, under the framework that was negotiated jointly among those groups, the, the idea is that it, that educators are held responsible only for students that are in their classroom or under their supervision for the majority of the school year. We have tended to interpret that under AYP and under the persistently lowest achieving list as full academic year.
Okay.
And my guess is that many districts are going to interpret that as full academic year.
Yeah, that would make sense because, yeah, thank you.
Mary Ann, please. Then Matenga, please.
Thank you. For the majority of the year, I mean, there are some classrooms where the entire student body changes from September to June. And that, that could pose a real challenge. The other thing is, what about the situation where you've got a classroom that is speaking mostly another language? And what about the qualifications of teachers teaching those classes?
Okay, so I think.
How can we assure that a teacher teaching in a class like that is truly qualified? Be doing that?
That would, that would be an issue of certification. And so those teachers who are in the bilingual classroom have to meet a high standard in terms of their preparation and also demonstration of language proficiency and passing MTTC in the language.
But who, who guarantees that? How, how can we be sure? I mean, for the children's sake, as far as what they're learning? And as far as the, for the teacher's sake to be correctly evaluated on what she or he is teaching?
That's a, that's a really good question. And I think it's why if you look at this evolution of our education system, particularly with this reform, we've gone from kind of, if you think about it this way, we've gone from certification gets you in. But ultimately, we need to be able to demonstrate that we're helping kids become proficient. So it's finally become a blend. It's not like an automatic lifetime badge. And it's appropriate because it, you know, the overwhelming number of teachers are going to be more than qualified because of the certification. But it's kind of saying there's also this other issue. And to your first question, these were only guidelines anyway. I mean, they can't impose, this was the major organizations, including the teachers and the administrators getting together on, this is what we would suggest you do with your evaluations. But they'll all be negotiated locally. So to your point, that, that may be a greater sensitivity in some districts and they would negotiate it differently if there were 100% of the kids moving. Yeah, I mean, well, you know, if I were, if I were a, a union official, I'd, you know, I'd be tough on that in the negotiations because you need to be sensitive to the, to the, the issues that are going to affect the teacher being able to demonstrate proficiency when that's going to be hard. And I think they will. I mean, that's what negotiations is all about and why I think this is really a good way to have done it. Where there's guidelines, we've endorsed these guidelines. And they've been done, you know, with principals and teachers together. And then I think we'll be on the right path.
But it's got to be fair for the students, too, not just.
I think exactly right. That's why, that's why we did need the proficiency piece of this eventually. You know, it can't be that you have a badge for life if it turns out that consistently the kids that are in your, that you're working with are not showing achievement growth. But I think, again, going back to my, my daughter, if that's the case, she needs ample time, as this calls for, to be able to improve. And I think you're going to see the overwhelming number of teachers given that time to, to get the kind of PD they need to do that. And it'll, all it'll do is help us focus. I mean, if I were an elementary teacher right now, I would want to know if I'm doing well in reading achievement growth, but I'm not in math. And I'd want to have that drilled down so I really understood that. Then if I was going to Wayne RISA or Ingam Media, intermediate or the MEA or online to get professional development, I'd know to focus it on, you know, I'm doing okay with this reading stuff. I need to really work on my math. That's what this is really going to help us get better at, I think with the data especially. Matenga had one, then Carolyn, then Nancy.
You know, many times there are community indicators that affect student progress. And so teachers intuitively, sometimes, you know, they may start a program either at a lunch hour or after school a little bit. And that program may have a student that has been in that program for four years because they know where to find that teacher and they just, so the, is there any way that teachers can get credit for starting outside of the classroom per se, programs that do contribute to the, you know, to the stabilization of that child's life or whatever to make that student better? And then that teacher may not get credit if the student is, you know, is now a senior and is under other teachers, but not necessarily that teacher.
I think there are actually two questions in there. I think one that you didn't intend to ask, but I'm going to answer anyway. And I'll do that one second. But the answer to that is locally negotiated, those things can be a part of the teacher. What kinds of things are you doing as an individual teacher that go above and beyond what you would normally be asking in the classroom that are going to affect student achievement, move students toward proficiency? I think that's the kind of thing that can be locally negotiated and frankly, probably should be locally negotiated. Those are, those are important pieces. Another question that I often hear that, that was kind of in there was that there are demographic factors that impact how quickly students grow. And one of the things that we see in the, in the, in the research literature is that there is almost no correlation between demographics and student growth rates. When you take into account where a student starts out, special education students, our students with disabilities, we should say.
Thank you.
English language learners, thank you. English language learners, African American, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, pretty much all grow at the same rate. And, and we can demonstrate that through our data. It's been demonstrated in data throughout the country that once you take into account where a student starts out, those demographics don't really matter. What matters is the quality of education that's happening in the classroom. And I think that's the important thing to understand about this. When you're tying things to student growth, that's where things become much more equalized. And it comes back to, again, this, this idea of being fair to students and fair to teachers. There is inherent in accountability, a, a tension between being fair to teachers and fair to students. Really, there is an inherent tension there. And the way that AYP was set up, the way that No Child Left Behind was set up was we're going to be fair to students, 100% expectation of the same level of performance for every student. When you move to growth, you're being fair to teachers, 100%, no exceptions, 100% expectation of the same level of growth for the students of every teacher. One of the things that that can do is that it can act, if you move entirely in that direction, it can say achievement gap's okay. Because if you have students who start out low versus students, students who start out high, you have the same amount of growth, they remain the same amount behind. So in some ways, and this is one of the things that's also in the framework, is that we're talking about growth toward proficiency. So it's a balance of that tension. And that's the important part about having a good accountability system is balancing the need to be fair towards students with the need to be fair toward educators.
Great answer, thank you. And I think Carolyn was next and then Nancy.
Well, this probably is a moot point at this. I was concerned about, and I think Mary Ann and Nancy kind of hit on it, teachers that if they really have this high turnover all year long, they're not going to be given as much weight as a teacher who has a classroom that stays pretty steady all year. And that, that just kind of troubles me.
But that can be taken into account with the data system.
Yeah, it can be locally negotiated. And it's, again, it's that idea of, if you're in the, it's that majority. That's one of the reasons the framework does talk about majority. There will be some teachers that will only have a few students who are full academic year and probably won't even get that kind of data because there's not that kind of data. They didn't have enough stable students to really have a sense of. They didn't have enough stable students to really have a sense of what happens with this teacher.
And if I'm, I see Frank in the audience, and I would, I would guess, if I were the head of the MEA or the FT, which is my next career goal, by the way, I would, I would be given suggestions along these lines to, to make sure that locally those things are, people are thinking about them, because this is the first time around. So you'd want the things like the mobility issues being taken into account. And I think that's why I was so glad, when I was first approached, that how, how would we look at these organizations working together to try to come up with a kind of a prototype? We thought, great, you know, because if that can be hashed out at the administrator and teacher level, it would be, it would be good for our kids. Nancy, please.
As I listen to this conversation, I'm struck with the irony that, that for years we've been concerned about children who are lost and, who fall through the cracks. And now it all of a sudden occurs to me that through this accountability system, given all the what ifs, what ifs, what ifs, which are all real, how many teachers are gonna be falling through the cracks? Because if you have a, a highly transient population, if you have a district that is constantly shuffling teachers trying to fill holes, if you have a persistent change in what it is you're teaching and where and to whom, you might not fit that criteria that has enough data to really qualify for this accountability system. But that doesn't mean you don't need help or don't need somebody to say, hey, what a great teacher you are, and we need to take advantage of those skills that you have to share with others. What do you do about that?
Well, there are a couple of issues there. One is, I think that's one of the reasons that student growth data is only a portion of the evaluations. There are other things that can be looked at that, so again, we look at, right now, for the most part, educator evaluations are based on things other than student growth. That is currently the majority practice. Those kind of things can continue, and we can also look at improving what is actually being looked at. The issue really is, if you're going to be making decisions based on student achievement and growth data, you want to have that data be statistically stable, sufficient to really make those kinds of decisions based upon those. And we are gonna have the vast majority of teachers and principals and superintendents that have enough to be able to do that, particularly if you, if you look across multiple years to get to the, to the threshold of, of students that you would need to actually look at. The vast majority are going to have the data, but in the cases where, say for example, if you are teaching a, a class of autistic students, you may have a very small class load. And you may have to just look at different things for that class. So there are different things that, that can be done, and I think that's the way that I would think that those things would be handled.
Very good.
It seems to me too that, you know, this gets back to the, begs the questions that Ted Saunders with his, his value-added assessment years back that everybody complained about was that, that, you know, we can't look at discrete things on discrete days at discrete times. What you have to look at is a trend over a three, four, five-year, which is great for the teacher. It doesn't do much for a parent who's trying to say, but my child is here today. So I'm glad to hear that we're still balancing what's, what's going on today with, with that data as it comes out, but it's gonna be interesting.
Certification, Flora.
Okay. We'll talk about administrative certification first, and that was authorized in section fifteen thirty-six, subsection seven of the revised school code under the PA two oh five that was signed in law in January. And basically, what that section does, and you do have a handout that shows you the different routes to administrative certification. And basically, it just says that the department shall recognize alternative pathways to earning the basic school administrator certificate based on experience or alternative preparation or both. Doesn't really give us any real guidelines on how to do this. And basically, what we have right now is a voluntary, up until this point, we had a voluntary administrator certificate, which we put either principal preparation for elementary and secondary or central office administrators on. And that was voluntary up until then. And to the board's credit, in two thousand and three, that, that task force on elevating excellent leaders or educational leadership, as a result of that task force, we came up with our principal preparation standards, which we brought to the board for approval, and also the central office administrator standards. And now the superintendent has charged me with pulling together a group of folks who are gonna work on the alternative certification for administrators. We'll be meeting, we met once, and we'll continue to meet until we have that process worked out. For current school administrators, those who are already in positions, they're okay to be in those current positions. They can remain in those positions without certification. However, if they are new administrators, they have to hold a valid Michigan administrator certificate, or they have six months to get enrolled into a program if they are employed by a local district as a superintendent. They will have six months to, to get into a program, a preparation program. Then they have three years to complete that preparation program. So that's, that's kind of where we are right now with administrative certification. The teacher certification, we have alternate routes to teachers. You do have another grid like this that talks about teacher certification and the alternate route. And that's section fifteen thirty-one I of the school code, the revised school code. And basically, that states that the superintendent shall establish a process for a person to earn an interim teaching certificate. And while they're working, they can be employed under that interim teaching certificate. In order to do that, the person has to meet the following. They have to participate, they have to be in an alternative teacher preparation program that's been approved by the superintendent based on the standards. They must hold a bachelor's degree or higher with a GPA of three point oh, minimum. They have to have already passed the Michigan test for teacher certification, basic skills, and content test. And if they're elementary, they will have to have passed that elementary certification test as well as basic skills. And they will have three years to complete the alternate route program. And in order for them to move on to either provisional teaching certificate or professional education certificate, they will have to show that they have three years of successful teaching under that interim teaching certificate. In terms of what's different, really different about section fifteen I is that it does authorize other providers or providers other than teacher preparation institutions to offer alternate route programs. And, and in that program, they have to show that the person will complete the equivalent of at least twelve semester credit hours that covers things like child development or child psychology, family and community relationships, how to work with diverse learners, instructional strategies. They must have a field-based experience in a classroom setting, which basically would be considered the student teaching. And then the program can only accept participants that meet those prerequisite requirements that I talked about. They also will have to meet Michigan's reading requirement, they have to meet the CTR requirement, they have to be fingerprinted and go through the FBI background check. So all of those things will still be in place. The school district that employs one of those teachers under that interim teaching certificate has to provide intensive observation and coaching in a manner that would be prescribed by our process, the criteria established by the Michigan Department of Education. And they have to assure that the person is making satisfactory progress toward meeting certification requirements. And so that interim certificate is the authorization to teach while you are getting the necessary additional preparation for teacher certification.
Thanks, Flora. Any comments or questions on that section before we go to PLAs? It's pretty, pretty clear, and we're working on those. Okay, Mary Alice, but right to the one that's gotten more publicity recently, but is certainly not the only, as you could see, reform.
Yes, definitely not the only. With the persistently lowest achieving schools, as Mike said earlier, the reason why we're using that term is that's the term that the federal government has used. The schools that are placed on this list of persistently lowest achieving schools are eligible to apply for a school improvement grant. That's a competitive grant process. But these schools are eligible to do that. So we're using the same terminology, it's a parallel structure with what was put in our state legislation. So in August ninety-two, schools appeared on the list. The legislation creates not only the position that I'm currently occupying on an interim basis, but also creates the state school reform district. The possibility, the frightening possibility for many schools, and sometimes for us, is direct state governance of some schools that are on this list. This is not something that we take lightly. It is certainly, from my experience to this point, not something that school districts take lightly. So let's talk about how you get identified. There is a formula, there, our state legislation makes reference to federal legislation. So when we created this formula, or the set of business rules that identify schools as persistently lowest achieving, that is the same formula that's been recognized in our state fiscal stabilization grant. It was the formula that was also used in our Race to the Top grant, but we've put that in our past. And it is the formula that was approved to be used for the school improvement grant. We talked previously about the idea of identifying the five percent lowest performing schools, and I think you're all familiar with hearing that metric, the lowest five percent. In fact, due to the federal requirements, there are two pools of schools that are identified, and we're pulling out the lowest five percent of those two pools. So just when you thought adequate yearly progress was confusing, we thought we'd put all of this together. And it has produced some consternation, schools have said, but we've been making adequate yearly progress all along, why did we wind up on this list? And here's why. Because with schools that are Title I schools, that's one of the pools that we identify, schools that are Title I and have not made adequate yearly progress for several years. So those are schools that we referred to as high priority schools in the past, that's one pool. You rank order those, pull the lowest five percent. Then there's the second pool, because what the federal government really wanted to get at was to provide some funding through the school improvement grant for high schools. They've never pulled out a separate set of funding just aimed at secondary schools. So in Michigan, secondary schools are schools with any of grades seven through twelve. So you take all of those schools, regardless of whether or not they're receiving Title I funds, regardless of their AYP status, but they do have to be eligible to receive Title I funding. So all of the secondary schools in the state that are eligible to receive Title I funding were in that second pool. We ranked ordered them and identified the lowest five percent.
So the net was really more like two or two point some percent of the schools rather than five?
Right, it's about two point five percent.
You look at the total four thousand schools that, that are out there.
That's a, that is a really good point. And when, if you want to get into a little more detail, I always bring my friend Joseph along with me. Because when we applied for the school improvement grant, quite frankly, I couldn't have done it without Joseph. Our original application and our original idea was to rank order all the schools in the state, top to bottom, pick the lowest five percent, voila, that would be our list. The federal government rules were a little bit different from that, so we couldn't go down that road. That original proposal was rejected. So we followed the rules, as good students always do, and we came up with a set of business rules that did follow the rules. But in order to do that, we also had to rank order all the schools in the state. And several legislators said, you're just gonna talk about the lowest five percent and you're not gonna talk about the highest five percent? And that is what led to Mike's decision, which I think has turned out to be really an excellent decision, to show the entire list of schools from the top to the bottom, as well as pulling out the persistently lowest achieving schools, and to be able to look at that entire metric.
You know, on that count, I, I really am very proud of teachers, principals, and superintendents, who we thought there would be more of a backlash for the top to the bottom. That's not what we're finding at all. I mean, people wanted to know where they are, how they might get better. I mean, it's really a nice statement about our kind of combined profession that people were open to that. Because, you know, when we, when we decided, it was kind of like, oh, here we go, the middle people don't really wanna know they're in the middle. And, and there are some surprises, but I, I, in fact, I pulled up a district I used to be superintendent in, and, and Joseph and team have figured out a way that it's very easy to get your whole district. You don't have to look for each school individually. And I was very surprised to see a school, at least from the time I was there, that was, I think at the twelve percentile, when virtually everything else was at the ninety or eighty-nine. I would think that would be a very useful tool. And that's the way I heard it come back, rather than, oh, I wish people didn't know that. Because if you don't know it, you can't do anything about it. And so I would support what Mary Alice just said.
That, and I think the other thing that we have to make sure that we're always reminding people of, it isn't just the percent proficient. It's also based on whether or not a school is increasing the number of students that are proficient, or if that's decreasing over years. And it's seven years of, several, not seven yet, it's several years of data. I did send everybody and we posted it, the set of business rules, the formula that identifies the school. This is seven pages long, and there's a, a layman's interpretation for the first couple of pages that's a little more direct. And then if you wanna dig into the details, there's a much more detailed description. And then, as Mike said, we posted on our website, and I'll show that at the very end, where you can get information about just an individual district or just an individual school that you're curious about to see how their standings look. But that, all of those are descriptions of how a school got there. But then our state law goes beyond that, and it goes to the next part, that is the part that probably produces the greatest level of anxiety. When this list was published, we notified schools that they then are under the oversight of the state school reform officer, which at this point is me. The local school board has ninety days to submit a plan. Their due date for that is November sixteenth. In that ninety days, they have to have a plan that meets the same requirements as you would for a school improvement grant. So they're creating a redesign plan, that redesign plan is also an application for a competitive school improvement grant. There are some very specific things under each of the four reform models. But the other thing that the state legislation refers to is by the end of those ninety days, if you need to amend your collective bargaining agreement to put one of those interventions into place, then a copy of the addendum to the collective bargaining agreement must be submitted along with the redesign plan. It's a tall order. At that point, a school can be approved, disapproved, or we can request changes. So it's not automatic, this isn't the first time you read through it and go, oh, no good, we'll toss them in the disapproved pile. We can actually send it back and say, there are a couple of areas that are weak or that are not clear, or that did not meet the requirements of transformation, turnaround, restart, or school closure. So that's, at the end of the ninety days that comes to us, we have thirty days to turn those ninety-two, those ninety-two redesign plans around and communicate with the district. The redesign plan, as I said, can, can do one of four things. It can close a school, it can restart the school as a charter or charter-like school under independent governance. Under the turnaround intervention, the principal can be replaced, and no more than fifty percent of the teachers rehired. Under transformation, the principal may be replaced, and numerous other reforms must be put into place too, including to use an evaluation system that ties teacher performance to student growth. That's part of the transformation model. Those are all deeply described in, in the federal legislation for the school improvement grant. And so we are encouraging schools to look at the federal guidance, we're encouraging them to look at the numerous websites that have all kinds of information about how you do this work. And that's one reason why Linda's shop and my shop are joined at the hip, because Linda is administering the school improvement grant. And those redesign plans have to meet that same structure. So we're trying to get everybody on board together. So we're trying to get everybody on board together and moving in a similar direction. Now, I will say one thing. A school can have an approvable redesign plan at the end of 90 days. That is not a successful school improvement grant application. But the reverse is not true. If it's a successful school improvement grant application, it's also a successful redesign plan, because it includes all of the elements that are required, and in addition, shows a clear pathway to improvement and shows that the district has the capacity to do this turnaround. Our state law acknowledges the fact that it goes back to the district first. If you have a school that's persistently lowest achieving, it's the job of the district to turn that school around. So our state law says, you get the first shot at it. Our state law doesn't start with, we're taking you over. It starts with, let's try to redesign this school and improve it. So what is it that we're looking for? And again, when we talk about something that causes high anxiety, we're looking for dramatic improvement in student achievement. There's no other way to say it. Adequate yearly progress, in many ways, has failed us, because you can do something called safe harbor and make minimal progress. To do this turnaround, we can't have it be minimal. We're looking for a dramatic improvement. And schools often say, is that even possible? And the answer is, yes, that is possible. And there are examples out there. But as several of you acknowledged, and Nancy, I really appreciated your words at the beginning of this, we're not saying that people are not good teachers. We're not saying that people are not good administrators. We're saying, this is really hard work, and it takes everybody involved to make the effort work, including the community. And Matinka, you mentioned some things that happen outside of class time, some extra programs that are put in place, teachers that go that extra mile. Those teachers are out there, and they're in some of these persistently lowest achieving schools. But it's going to take a dramatic, concerted, focused effort to turn these schools around. So we're going to ask each of them to set some goals, and yes, we can veto some of the goals they set. If it's not rigorous enough, I feel comfortable saying it has to be more than that. But it's not just our statewide assessment. Schools can use the regular things that they use in a school to say, how is the student doing? What kind of progress is the student making? Is the student making the grade? Are they improving? So that local data that we don't collect and do not have access to can be used. But then, of course, someone will have to give us access and say, this is what we're using, this is what the results are at the end of the year or at the end of the quarter. So the statewide assessment is included, local data is also included. And the persistently lowest achieving list will be issued annually. So again, we'll see whether a school remains on that list or moves off. And then in the top to bottom ranking, we'll be able to see every year, schools that move up. And unfortunately, we'll probably see some that move down.
And on that, if I might just, as you can see my role, I'm looking for context with what board has heard before. This is why this was the only year that there were two lists, because there was SIG money earlier. And in the new list, there were some surprises to some schools, because the new list included one more year of data, and therefore, some dropped off and a few dropped, I'm going to remember the numbers. But from here on in, as Mary Alice just said, we're down to one list. We won't have quite that confusion. And that's something that was just unavoidable, given the deadlines for the federal grant, and then kind of not synchronizing with our state law at the first year.
And the legislation requires an annual report to the education committees in the legislature of how these persistently lowest achieving schools are doing. And I think that is in great part also what we're doing, what we are doing to assist them. So I actually appreciate that. I've said a couple of times that we've posted things on our website. I know that our website can be confusing and disorienting and hard to find things. So we decided that we'd put a button that says, "School Reform," right on the front page, so people can go to the front page of the MDE website, and right here where it says, "School Reform." Now, this is not live, or I would click and take us there right now, but there are lots of different pieces of information that are posted there. And then the way that we always close out any presentation is, we have so many of the pieces that we've talked about, and here are the culprits to whom you can speak directly about these pieces of information, the context for each of them. And at that point, I'm turning it back to Mike.
So lights up, and I saw Reggie had his hand, and then Nancy and Liz. And please.
I was just hoping to understand, I had two issues. One, I wanted to understand the terminology on tier-one pool versus tier-one school.
I know. That's good. Thanks. Yeah. The, what we're referring to when we say tier-one pool is the pool of schools that are receiving Title I funds that have failed to make adequate yearly progress for several years in a row. We used to call them high priority schools. For the school improvement grant, for purposes of the school improvement grant, that tier of schools had to be identified. There are about 115 of them. The lowest 5% on that list are tier-one schools. And those are deemed, in particular by the federal government, to be in urgent need of reform.
Thank you.
Did that help?
That did.
Okay.
Thanks. And second, really, it's just a comment. You know, I've talked with a number of local school districts over the course of the last few weeks, and many of them are struggling with what they call the most challenging year that they've had in terms of getting organized for school opening. And this is not anybody's fault, it's just kind of the perfect storm of things that have come together. The retirements earlier this year, combined with the need for restructuring of schools, and the budget shortfalls and the uncertainty around budgets, together have made this year extremely challenging. And to the extent that we can, you know, focus on some of those issues, just, you know, helping the local school districts understand how they can move people around. You mentioned the collective bargaining issues, Mary Alice. And of course, I know you're cognizant of the fact that collective bargaining and tenure issues provide an overlay here that requires a great deal of thought and some bargaining, perhaps, on behalf of these local school districts. So, you know, I suggested, we have some folks in our shop who are willing to volunteer to help if you would like that assistance in sort of putting some information out to local school districts about how these things, you know, PARA and the Tenure Act affect the work that they're going to be doing. They'd be happy to meet with you.
We have, in fact, already scheduled a meeting.
We have? Good. Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate that, because I was listening to Flora, and she can quote the numbers of the law. And of course, I know the number of this particular piece of legislation, 380.1280C. So we know that part of it, but we don't deeply know every single piece of legislation that impacts this. So it's really helpful to have others with a deeper level of knowledge. And we've turned, of course, to our Attorney General's office in some instances as well.
Yeah, I'm sure they have some folks who can be helpful in that regard. This problem of, all of this coming together will hopefully be just a one- or two-year problem as schools understand this process. But I have, I've heard some, I've heard great pain among local school administrators just trying to manage all of this. Again, nobody's fault. This just, this all came together very fast. There's a great need for change, state budgetary issues, and local budget issues that have made this quite challenging.
Yes. Thank you, Reggie. Nancy, then Liz, please.
Excuse me. I want to, I want to get back to some of my needs for clarification here. I think I heard you say that in your discussion, you gave reference to safe harbor and how that no longer was something that we were looking for, was safe harbor, we couldn't have those kinds of minimums. Does that mean, does that mean that we will no longer have a safe harbor designation available to schools? Will they?
No, I probably misspoke. Safe harbor is something with adequate yearly progress.
Right.
The persistently lowest achieving list doesn't have a safe harbor.
So one doesn't trump the other.
No. The only thing that adequate yearly progress can do for you is if you make adequate yearly progress, you can pull yourself out of the tier-one pool.
Okay.
So you aren't even, so you aren't showing up on that list.
Just once, if you make it even just once, you could be out of the pool.
No, you have to make it two years in a row, so that you're making adequate yearly progress again.
Right. Well, just clarifying.
No, that's really, no, that's a really good point, because, like I said, the schools that have been making adequate yearly progress all along said, the secondary schools, how did we wind up here?
Thank you. Liz, please.
Different metric.
Yeah. My question is, and I don't have my figures right with me, but, you know, I was reading some newspaper articles, and they were critical of the fact that there were like 100 and some schools that were eligible for school improvement grants, and 82 or something submitted applications, and 28 or so were awarded, were awarded grants. And then the press was taking to task those schools that didn't even submit an application. And it, I may be, I just, it's something that occurred to me, and it may not be fact, and I'm looking to you to tell me, is that maybe that these are the most, the schools with the high, with the most difficulties, and grant writing is a skill, and they may not have anyone to do that, and would it be possible that the schools that didn't submit applications just don't have the expertises? Or am I, were they just choosing not to do the work?
There was a group of schools that didn't apply because they closed at the end of the last school year.
Okay.
And so they came off because of that. There were some schools where the superintendent decided he or she would see whether or not they showed up the second year, and so they chose not to apply for the money. And some schools did not want to have to abide by the guidelines, and so chose not to apply.
Okay. And we have been providing technical assistance.
Right, yes.
For the first round of SIG grants, Linda's folks have provided technical assistance. And now, as we're moving into this, in fact, this Friday, we're having a technical assistance meeting with the, all of the schools on the persistently lowest achieving list.
Nancy, you had another one.
Thank you. Sometimes colors it and it's.
Yeah. I mean, I, well.
Yeah.
Mary Alice said it, but I think some threw the dice.
Yeah.
And the dice didn't come up.
Worked out the way they hoped.
If we're, this is all predicated on a school, not a district. We have a set of criteria or not criteria, accountability measures, I guess we should call them, that you're looking for those schools to meet, to show that they are making dramatic improvement, goals will be set, metrics will include PLA top to bottom, annual reports to the legislature. What happens when you have a district that is full of those schools, but you're counting on this district to put forward a plan that, in my mind, to my mind, if they'd been able to do that to begin with, we wouldn't be here? What kinds of supports, or helps, or oversight, or whatever you want to call it, can we, or is it possible that we can provide those kinds of districts that aren't just an isolated school here and there, but it's persisted throughout the culture of that district?
And we do have a few of those. Well, actually, I'm going to ask Linda to help me with this response, but let me start, and then we'll tag team it. I think the idea of the district's capacity is a really important idea, and the feds really believe that that was an important idea. So they, when they apply for a school improvement grant, we have to know that the district has the capacity to do the work. So there will be quite a bit of oversight and support provided. Some of the funds can be used at the district level to provide the support that the schools need. You know, when you look at the worst-case scenario, we could wind up in charge of schools that the district cannot handle. Because if they don't make progress, that's where we go next. So there is that issue. And we're concerned, and then I'm going to let Linda pass it off, and then one last comment.
To build on that, then, we're going, we have put in place, for those who are recipients of the school improvement grant, and we'd have to look at funding in order to do the others, a set of people who will be going in, and we're calling them facilitator monitors, which may sound like a misnomer, but the very purpose there is to work with the school staff to see whether or not they're making progress on those goals that Mary Alice mentioned, because we want quarterly goals, annual goals, out over a period of time. If progress isn't being made because there's a problem at the local district level, that facilitator monitors, one, going to report it to us, and two, going to go and work with the district. Should we find that the district does not have the capacity, we will then work with the district and perhaps an ISD or some other entity, and turn that project over to someone else to run and manage.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to, because we have guests that were told about 11 o'clock, I'm going to reduce my closing comments to just two points for context, and they're pretty important. One is that there's been some concern about the metrics for this, not including what's been known as 90, 90, 90. And that means 90% of the kids graduate, 90% get into college, and 90% graduate from college. And there are a number of districts, or particularly charter schools, that have embraced that notion. First of all, the data is not even available. So even if we wanted to do that, we couldn't. But I've established a referent group that's made up of many of the associations that are sitting here. Some of the schools that actually operate with that in mind will also serve on this and try to help us establish how we get there. Because there's no question that you would like, at a point in time, to have proficiency and the 90, 90, 90. I was a little taken back, because this is an extreme case, but I mean, I have one person pretty intimately involved in that that thinks it should be just 90, 90, 90. And the reason we wouldn't support that is, first of all, I don't think it would pass the Fed muster, but, or the state rules. But I think, in addition, I don't think anyone's doing this right now, but you could, if you chose to wink at graduation, have open enrollment colleges, and, or even if you weren't doing that, you could go to universities that suddenly, without the right proficiency, you're just dooming them to failure. So we're going to find this blend, I'm very confident. It's probably, you know, it's a while down the road, because the data systems have to be built. But if we don't start thinking about that now and how to incorporate it into some of the longitudinal data systems that are being built, for example, then we won't get there. And then the second thing is that I think we're starting with Ed Week, Marty's worked this out, but the legislation calls for me to appoint a reform officer, as you know. Mary Alice, by the way, this whole team, can you just see the quality of these four folks? There's a whole team that just, I sit back thinking, we are so lucky to have this kind of team in place at this time. Because as Reggie said, everything's converged, including for us. And then when I hear a cabinet this morning, I got to make another level of cuts, I kind of wonder how. But anyway, Mary Alice, in this case, was a perfect selection to agree to stick around for six months or a little longer, perhaps, to, you can see the necessary work that she's had in her history that brings her to be this right person to get a system in place. What I've done is, we will start with Ed Week asking for letters of interest on a national level, really, but also statewide, of folks who would be interested in being a permanent reform officer, which the legislation calls for me to appoint. And that person would be a deputy superintendent and department reform officer. And perhaps someday, hopefully not, but perhaps someday, if there are schools that don't make the muster, they would be in a statewide district, and that person would also be the superintendent of that statewide district. So it's not, you know, we're going to do this right. The goal would be maybe to have someone overlapping with Mary Alice around February 1. The legislature was good enough to upfront a little bit of money for us on that, so I think we would be able to fund that about then. So for context of today's discussion, that's where we go. And can't thank the team enough, it's been great, and we're going to move on to our guests. I know Senator Cis and some others are here that have been, but thank you, guys. I'm going to even do this because.
Thank you.
And thanks, Ford, for really thoughtful questions and comments. I mean, I think it not only helps, I picked up some pieces today, but as much as we're immersed in it, you don't see it the same way, or you hear other thoughts about that.
It's like a term forest in the trees.
Yeah, that's right. That is right.